I'd like to call the meeting to order. And the first order of business is to elect a temporary chairperson.
I move that we elect Michelle Schoenfeld as our temporary chairperson.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Next, we administer the oath of office to the superintendent of schools.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of superintendent of schools of the White Plains City School District, White Plains, New York, according to my best ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I sign it, please?
Oh, yes.
And now we administer the oath of office to the three board members who were elected in May for three-year terms. Mr. Latitia, Mr. Ricky, and Mrs. George.
That's a nice signature.
It's calligraphy.
Say your name.
Let's go.
Together.
Okay.
And?
Two, three. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of White Plains, New York, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. And now we remind everyone of the two time capsules that were buried on school grounds that will be recovered in future years. One is through 2283. This was buried at the White Plains Middle School and is to be recovered in, yes, 2283. It was buried in 1983. That's 103 hundred years. And then the other one is at George Washington School, was buried in 2003 and is to be recovered in 2053. Next, we elect the president of the Board of Education.
I nominate Rosemary Eller as president of the Board of Education.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mrs. Eller, will you take your oath?
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of White Plains, New York, according to the best of my ability. Oh. Rewind. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of president of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of White Plains, New York, according to the best of my ability. Thank you. Because that's what happens, you have two people named Rose on the board, so I actually got it, so it's all good.
And my job is finished, and you may now take over.
Thank you. Next, we'll have nomination for the office of vice president of the Board of Education. I nominate Charlie Norris to the office of vice president of the Board.
I'll second.
Yeah, I move, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of vice president of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of White Plains, New York, according to the best of my ability.
Next, we have a resolution for establishing meetings of the Board of Education. Be it resolved that the first regular Board of Education meeting will be held immediately following this reorganization meeting, and that future regular meetings of the Board of Education of the White Plains City School District be held at the Board of Education office on the second Monday of each month during the year at 7:30 PM or as otherwise voted on by the Board as per our attachment. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, may I ask for a motion for items three through eight on our reorganization agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next.
We have two oaths. First mine, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of school district clerk of the city school district of the City of White Plains, New York, according to the best of my ability. And then we have Lindsey Rose Musgrave.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of school district treasurer of the city school district of the City of White Plains, New York, according to the best of my ability.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. And may I have a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 6, 2021. Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the White Plains School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to ask for you, you're joining me in a brief moment of silence, in memory of Renee Van Heck, District Wide Carpenter, 1965 to 1976. Thank you. Now, good evening, everybody. It's nice to actually be here in public again, and I think that goes a long way to hopefully seeing what we're going to see in September. First and foremost, I don't have any inside information as to what the PK-12 guidance will be come September, but as soon as we do have that, we'll make sure that we definitely share that with you. First thing that I wanted to address prior to the board talking about, any announcements that you may have, is the shifting of our elementary school assistant principals. Now, I suspect that a number of the parents who are in the audience this evening are here for that reason, and I want to thank you for that. Also want to thank you to all of you who have reached out to me with concern related to the shifting of assistant principals. Let me start by saying this. As teachers, and those of us who are in the room who have experienced this as teachers, we stand ready at any point in time to shift where we need to be in the organization, whether it be a classroom, a grade level, a school, whatever the case may be. That's part of what we do. It doesn't take away the sting of the feeling of losing somebody that's part of your school community whom you've come to love, right? And so my explanation this evening has nothing to do with trying to take away the feeling of love that you've come to have for your assistant principals. In fact, that's a wonderful thing, and it's to be celebrated. I would be concerned if nobody cared, quite frankly. Because we've heard from so many parents and guardians at our various schools, it's demonstrable to me how valuable these leaders are in our school organization. The reason behind shifting assistant principals is simply this: when we change the environment, that will help to allow for our children to grow as well as our leaders. Again, I'm not trying to change your mind in thinking that Joe Ricka is best for school A. That's the way I feel. I want Joe there. Yes, I understand. If we could replicate, you know, and do all those things, we absolutely would. But the point is that the shifting of folks in the organization is driven to make sure that we're doing the best we can possibly do for our children, all of our children throughout the school district. Now, folks have asked me, why this year? Well, I will submit this to you. This year, next year, five years from now, you would still feel the way you do. It might be a little bit different because you're not coming out of a pandemic, or because you haven't experienced some of the things that you've experienced personally in your pandemic experience, which we've learned is all a little bit different. All of us, and we've all been through it, but we've felt it differently. We were looking at making this shift last year. Clearly, that wouldn't have been advantageous for our kids or our school communities. So this year will allow us to make that transition in a time where we're already kind of moving through transitions. Again, not meant to change your shift, your thinking, but to give you our thinking. Some folks have asked me, why the last week of school? Simple. It should have nothing to do with the celebratory aspect of the end of school for our children. These are adult conversations about adults, and I didn't want them to be conflated with the things that are going on in celebration of our kids at the end of the academic year after a really challenging year. And the question came up, why right before 4th of July? Because that was as quick as I could get it out to you, before the holiday, and allow our colleagues the appropriate time to be able to transition and make sure that we have that overlap that we need when we make this swim. There was a great question, Post Roads in the house. Why PostRoad, why is PostRoad left with the opening? Well, quite frankly, Mrs. Sario is in an enviable position because she has the opportunity to now seek and find a brand-new candidate to best meet her needs with Mrs. Lassiter moving to George Washington. Perfect? No way. Again, my words tonight, do they take the sting out of how you're feeling? They don't. But the reality is this: in a multifaceted and dynamic organization such as ours, disruption, supported disruption, and change is good. None of our leaders at any level in our leadership tree, myself included, and believe me, I'm experiencing right now, should never be comfortable. And that's not in a negative or dangerous way, because when we're a little bit uncomfortable, as you all know, we're growing. So just like teachers in the classroom, just like students in the seats, administrative and leadership team is part of that growth process. Now, that's the explanation. It doesn't change how you feel, and believe me when I say this to you, I respect that. Some parents have come to me and said, hey, I wanted to be part of that planning process. I respect that, too. But there are aspects to human resources that they really aren't community, you know, prone, don't lend themselves to community, because here's the deal: people feel how they feel, and unfortunately, don't have the same level of insight into every facet of the organization that you might have in, say, one, two, or three particular schools, depending upon the trajectory of your kids. So the last question, I think, that was interesting to me, well, they're all interesting, but was, so now should we expect that the principals are going to be shifted next year? No, you should not expect that. What we're looking to do right now is support our assistant principals, support our principals, and again, continue to move the educational program forward, because at the end of the day, any change to adults is all meant to benefit kids. The only reason we were able to do this is because we have extraordinarily talented assistant principals. We couldn't do it if we didn't, because it wouldn't be right, and it wouldn't be fair, and it wouldn't be proper for myself as a teacher to knowingly put somebody who's not going to be successful in a new role. So again, my explanation this evening is not to change or try and change the way you feel, but give you rationale behind the objective and why we did what we did. Hey, and I don't think this is going to happen, but guess what? If it doesn't work, we'll revisit it, just like everything else. And if I made a mistake, I'll tell you I made a mistake. I don't think I did, but if I did, I will. What we really need to do right now, and again, not telling you what to do, but welcome our new assistant principals, and give them the same support and encouragement that we've always given the folks in our educational community, so that we can move forward with as little disruption smooth as possible. And certainly, we're going to do that on our end, too. So that, I just wanted to give that explanation, because I know that folks are going to have questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you for that. Next, we're going to move into announcements by the board, and just a few things I wanted to touch base on as we ended our school year. Many of us attended and participated in the elementary school graduations, and I hope I can speak collectively when I say, being there and seeing the buzz of excitement after the year that we had brought joy. You know, to see families being able to be there, share that moment, brought joy, to see the creative ways graduations were done to keep everyone safe, really brought joy. And I could see that that's what we needed as a community, as a school community, and I just wanted to say thank you to every elementary school principal, assistant principal, and staff for what you did to make that moment memorable, not only for the parents and the students, but for us, because we needed it, too. So, thank you.
Rosemary, can I just add to that announcement about the moving up ceremonies, that I also appreciated that not every single student was able to physically be present, and there seemed to be a real effort to include those children who were not able to be there in person. So I did appreciate that as well. That was a very inclusive kind of experience.
That was my next sentence. Thank you. That's okay, that's okay. So, of course, it was inclusive, because that's who you are, and not a surprise. For the first time in a long time, middle school moving up and the high school graduation at White Plains High School. The feedback, I think, was outstanding, but most important was our students, and we celebrated a lot of success that day. You know, our students are going off in the world to contribute in their way, and I know that they will. Our students were resilient, they stayed the course, they supported one another, and most of all, the success cannot be, you know, just cannot be overlooked, because they have a skill set now that no one else would really have, right? As they move up, they already know how to be resilient, they know how to use their voice, and I'm really, really proud of that. We have, we have a student whose artwork will be in the Capitol next year. We have one of our lady tigers, who'll be the first lady tiger from our school to be in the, to go to the Naval Academy. We have so much to be proud of, and it's all because of what you contribute as administrators, as parents, as colleagues in our offices. Everything comes together like an orchestra to make it right for these kids, and that's what we did, and that's what we did during a tough time. So I really just wanted to acknowledge that, and I'm sure board members will have other comments, but I have to say that so that you hear it. We did everything together that we could, like a well-tuned orchestra, to bring our kids to where they needed to be. And will they be stronger for what we've done, for the choices they've made, whether remote, whether they came back? They will be stronger, and they will be able to adapt to any situation. So I wanted to thank you all for that. Secondly, I did have the opportunity to participate in the educational summit that the Secretary of Education asked for White Plains to participate in, and I have to tell you, that is a great honor. But I don't take that honor on my own. I know that every single person up here, sitting, contributed, whether, Michelle, don't miss that email. They want you to respond. Whether I had a question, you know, I could ask Joe, I could ask a cabinet member, and the support from all of you could not, you know, have meant more to me. So I really do want to thank you, I really want to thank you all for that, and that's all I have.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, am I on? Am I on, John?
You're on.
Oh, good. So I'm going to jump in for a minute. Rosemary, Rosemary is very humble, and we've all served a long time together. We've been sitting next to each other for 17 years, but she's remarkable. And the leadership, this past 15 months has been an amazing time. It's one of the most amazing times I've ever experienced in my life. Suddenly, we were closed, and we all do this because we love the kids. I love the kids, and that's why we do this. That's why we spend so many hours doing this. And suddenly, we were in a place where no one has ever been. I had a neighbor who came up to me, a fourth-grade girl, and she said, how did they do this when you were a kid? And I said, we never did this. No one's ever done this before. We had snow days, and occasionally something would happen, and schools were closed. And to watch the way the school community and the greater community came together, but the board and Joe, the cabinet, three of whom are here tonight, their, their teams, the PTAs, the principals, the teachers, the people in the cafeterias, the custodial staff, the nurses, Maggie, Nurse Maggie. It was a remarkable thing to watch. There were moments of fear and moments of doubt, but to watch the way we came together, particularly at a time in the United States where coming un-together seems to be the only way to do things, but we came together, and we, with a single purpose and a single voice, all standing, facing north, making sure that the staff had what they needed so that we could deliver to the teachers and their families, and to keep giving meals, and to do what we did, and to be a part, to be a tiny, I was a tiny, tiny part of that, is something that I will never, ever forget. And the recognition that we've gotten, it's kind of cool. You know, we had Michael Cardano come here, and Rosemary kind of plays down what she's involved in, but it's pretty awesome. And then today, Randy Weingarten opened the American Federation of Teachers, the National Federation of Teachers, and there were all these photographs and things about White Plains. We have a lot to be thankful for, and the parents. This is a remarkable thing, particularly in this day and age. So I just, I just rambled a little bit, but thank you to everybody, and I just feel really humbled to be a tiny piece of this.
Can I just say that we also don't rest on our morals, so that we are ever vigilant that for some children, this was not the best of years, and so that we are providing summer programs for those children to ensure that they have the experiences that they need, if they need to catch up. And again, for the coming school year, that we are allocating, you know, budget funding to ensure, again, that our students get what they need in order to overcome anything they need to because of what happened this past year and the past 15 months. So we are constantly thinking ahead and looking toward the future and what our children need. Thank you, Annie.
I just wanted to give some assurances to parents who, some of whom we heard from. There were a lot of people who felt that they weren't getting information, and no one really knew, when are we going to start thinking about and planning reopening? I want to assure you that we did that the day that we closed. All of those plans were taking place throughout the entire time that your kids were sitting in front of Zoom. Nothing that came after that was done lightly or without thought. And I also want to assure you that the day that school closed, and probably before that last week, we're already planning for September. You may not hear of every step, you may not hear of every plan, you will get an announcement at the appropriate time, but please don't feel that people are on vacation, and, you know, and in September, you're going to get a letter that was just thrown together over a weekend. That's not the way it ever worked, and that's certainly not the way Ed House is going to work this year, and the board certainly would never allow it. So just know that those plans are already in place, and as always, the only thing I can ask you is to please be patient. You will hear about what's going on, you will hear about the bus routes, there are going to be changes. We don't have CDC information yet. September's months away, and you know that from one day to the next, this has, you know, been changing for 15 months. So I know that the board trusts Dr. Ricka and his entire staff, and I'm asking you to support us, to support them, and enjoy your summer, and know that your kids will be safe when they come back in September.
Do we, do you have a comment?
Next, we'll move on to the public participation portion of our meeting. The board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person and a maximum limit of 25 minutes. Please respect the privacy or dignity of any individual, and know that the administration would be happy to privately address any concerns. Do we have any public participation? If so, please step to the mic to my left and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Rubin. I live at number five, Easton Avenue, and I have a child in the Ridgeway School. I appreciate your comments at the beginning of the meeting, Dr. Ricka, but for me, the lack of transparency in the announcement was just shocking, after a year of phenomenal transparency and in some circumstances, over-communication. For me personally, this isn't about my feeling of our AP at Ridgway. I adore Dr. Crawford. I hope she has the opportunity to stay. I'm sure whoever will replace her will be wonderful. This, for me, is actually more about my trust in the board and in you as our superintendent. I would have thought that an announcement as important as this would have been communicated earlier, so that we all had a time to digest it and voice our opinion. In businesses, succession plans are known, they're announced well in advance, and whether we like it or not, we do have to think of education as a business, and we are trying to attract top talent and great families into our community. We've all embraced a school choice program. We've all embraced a school choice program. When I toured each of the schools when I had an incoming kindergarten, my vibe with the administration had a lot to do with the school that I ultimately chose. So for me, seeing it unravel unexpectedly, without a retirement, without a resignation, just what feels like what is best for the community, is very unsettling. So I would like you to please take that into consideration.
Hi. My name is Audrey Bowman. I live at fifty-five Ogden Avenue, White Plains, New York. I want to start out by saying thank you to all of you guys. Thank you for all that you do, all year long, for all our schools. All the work that you did over the pandemic, our children needed that, and thank you. That being said, I, along with many other parents, have concerns coming out of this challenging year. We had concerns before this announcement. We had concerns about our children's education, their anxieties, their health. What we didn't know to be concerned about was that there would be a steady administration in their buildings. The changing of all the assistant principals affecting the administration of close to three thousand children after a year of such turmoil. It should come with some solid rationale. It should come with an explanation of how it, how it's going to benefit the kids. I do believe you guys are all trying to benefit our children. That's why I chose this community. That's why I work so hard for this community. But there should have been a chance for parents, teachers, administrators to voice how they feel. It's difficult to give the support that we normally would, and I think all of you know that we normally would, and that the district thrives on. The way this was done means that kids don't have a chance to say goodbye to some of the most consistent people in their lives. It feels as though that is underappreciated and undervalued. The assistant principals are the heart of the school, and the community. It feels like the communication is kind of breaking down. Most families have little to do with the AP in the building, but the ones that do are the ones that desperately need the steady force. Those are the kids that have lost parents, had house fires, don't necessarily have enough to eat. I understand that it's your right to move the assistant principals, but the district has felt fairly transparent over the last eight years that I've been involved. PTA Council is a great place where parents who want to be involved speak directly to Dr. Ricka and a Board of Ed member. We all give up time to be there, that would be with our families, working to support them, and a million other things. It has been lovely to exchange ideas and speak directly to both board members and Dr. Ricka, but how do we know going forward that what, that there will be any discussion over the major decisions? We are in a relationship. I do the best to do my part. I go to the meetings, I organize the fundraisers, I show up to events, I teach my kids to be respectful, I speak at meetings, I read letters and bulletins. And up until last week, it really felt like you guys were all doing your part as well. You show up to those same meetings, you write those letters, you write those bulletins, you go over budgets, you answer those questions. You listen, and you fully address concerns. But after last week, I'm not sure how we can continue to trust that issues affecting our kids aren't being kept only for private discussions. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lauren Craver. I'm at four Darby Court. I'm just gonna read this letter, because I hate public speaking. But this is a letter that was written by Ridgeway parents, and we collected on a national holiday, just in a few, a matter of a few hours, over a hundred, over, close to a hundred fifty signatures, from parents at Ridgeway. But here's the letter. Dear Board of Ed members and Dr. Ricka, we are White Plains parents who would like to raise serious concerns, not just about our children's educational welfare, but more importantly, their emotional and psychological well-being. It comes as a great surprise to the community, school administrators, faculty, staff, parents, and children, that there is a district-wide reorganization of top school administrators. It seems to us an abrupt conclusion of a plan that at no point included White Plains parents in the discussions. What is more disconcerting is the timing of events, well into the summer break during a time when many families are away. While we are grateful for how the school district has handled the past year, our children, our children are still reeling from events of the past two years. Ridgeway has gone through distressing times for two school years now, beginning with the leaving of Mrs. Tasha Brown. Families needed significant time to manage her exit. Events have accelerated at a very fast pace, in the midst of adjusting to the departure of a longtime pillar of strength, and getting to know our new administrator, the pandemic hit. Without needing to elaborate, each family has had to deal with unprecedented psychological and emotional challenges, to say the least. We are all still trying to find our footing. The coming school year has, still brings uncertainty. To that end, Dr. Crawford has been a constant in our children's lives through all of this. Families, especially the children, have drawn strength and comfort in her and Ms. Torres throughout each change they have encountered, both at Ridgeway and in their world as a whole. And together, they will continue to provide this. Together, they form an unbeatable tower of strength while we battle these uncertain times. They have spent the last two years building a rapport that assures us that Ridgeway is being led by a competent, consistent, and caring team. Reassigning Dr. Crawford will only erase all of that and start that process at Ridgeway all over again. We believe that all White Plains school administrators and staff are all, in their own way, highly competent and capable. The majority are loved by the White Plains community, no doubt. However, as Ridgeway families moving towards rebuilding, why obstruct the momentum and the path in doing so? We have a single goal of wanting our children to succeed. This can only be achieved successfully with psychological and emotional stability. Taking away the children's symbol of normalcy and consistency now is a, is a total disregard for our children's welfare. We fail as parents and educator, educators to uphold our mission. Change is most welcome, and Ridgeway has been, has seen more than its fair share of change in the past two years. As parents, we strive to bring consistency in these trying times. We do not want to rock the boat any further for our children. We respectfully urge you to reconsider the decision to once again alter such an important position at Ridgeway. Dr. Crawford is very much the heart of our school, and our children need her to remain there. We appeal to you as parents to ensure the emotional and psychological well-being of our children and our families. We are all still staggering from the past two years' events. Please consider what is truly best for our children. Please keep Dr. Crawford and Ms. Torres at Ridgeway. Thank you.
My name is Steve Magnuson. I'm at ten Cobb Avenue. I'll speak as, with an understanding that, yes, we understand teachers shift roles on an annual basis, sometimes unexpectedly. The, the position of a vice principal is quite unique. The associate principal, in many ways, becomes the hands and feet that the, the principal cannot always attend to. Yes, the principal and the vice principal always know the students' names, they're able to engage. But in my personal experience, my daughter had a severe anxiety issue, and it became the assistant principal who was able to intervene on a weekly basis to give her the stability that she needed for transition, and was instrumental in her actually wanting to go to school. So we understand that on an annual basis, a teacher might be changed from fourth grade to first grade. That's an adjustment that a teacher can be, to grow. But that's not going to affect a child who's going to come into that school year with a new teacher, no matter what the teacher had taught the previous year. It's a little different, in my experience, with the associate principal, in that the, the role is, has come to be a very personal and secure role within the school, that creates the environment, that creates the stability, that fosters growth, to actually get my child into the classroom. And so I think part of what was unsettling about this is that, you know, we've celebrated in the past the promotions, the transfers, as a way of encouraging and being able to say goodbye to certain faculty members and certain teachers, but done so in a way that's not so haphazard as to just shift schools for the sake of what seems to be, to us, irrational. But we understand, you know, the, the board and Dr. Ricka, that you have your reasons. But for us personally, it is a very difficult pill to swallow. So that's all.
Good evening. My name's Bonnie Gordon. I live at twenty North Lake Circle. I just wanted to share a personal experience. So I have a fourth grader at Ridgeway and a first grader. My first grader lost Mrs. Brown going into her kindergarten year. And I spent all my time at Ridgeway. So that was very, something very personal to her, to not have her there when she was going to show up for kindergarten. And then she went through a pandemic. She developed a tic. She made it through first grade, and now I have to tell her that her other constant won't be there when she comes back in second grade. This is a child, a seven-year-old, who has gone through so much, and has shown such a strength, and just such growth. And her family has everything. She comes from an educated household, where her parents are constant, and in her life all the time, and just still has been devastated by the last two years of what has happened to her. And to know I had, that she's going to show up in September, finally hoping for that normal school year that she has waited her entire, she's the youngest of three sisters. She's watched everybody in her house have a normal transition into school, and her turn hasn't come yet. She's still waiting, and she's seven. At what point are we going to give these children just one year to heal? One year of compassion? She's seven. She's not seventeen. She's not twenty-seven. She's seven. And she hasn't had that year yet in school. And I don't have the heart to watch her walk in on September and look for that one constant has been there all three years. Well, actually, since she's been there, and she won't be there. And I'm sure who's going to replace her, because I love this district, and everybody who's in it, will be great, but it's not going to help her in that moment of need. And I just feel, as a district, we didn't think about that littlest tiger, that second grader who hasn't had that normal year, especially at Ridgeway. They've gone through a lot of transition, and one more year was all she needed, just one year. That was all I asked. I appreciate it. I would like to sediment some of my other friends' feelings. Before I did this, I actually was an executive in a real-life big company. And we always had succession planning, and we always communicated it to our team, to our staff, to everybody, well in advance. I always knew when I was getting a new manager. It didn't just show up that day. It was announced to me well in advance. And I feel that this was not. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. And as we echoed, you know, Joe, yeah, yeah.
Again, I just want to say thank you. And thank you for, for sharing your thoughts. And, and I, I feel everything that you're saying, Mrs. Gordon, you know, I, I, hold on, hold on, let me finish. Thank you. I appreciate you sharing, sharing that, and I appreciate all of the experiences that, that folks have gone through. This is a very difficult time. It has been a very difficult time. Our children are going to be okay, because we are going to make sure, as the adults in their community, that they're going to be okay. If I have a heart attack and die on my way home tonight, God forbid, we're gonna be okay. It's not the person, it's the community. And the White Plains City School District has the ability to be versatile, and nimble, and change. And we, as the adults in the community, have to be able to accept that and support the kids. We can create a level of anxiety and stress in our children without even realizing that we're doing it. I'm not taking anything away from anything that anyone has said. That's real, it's happening. That has happened in your lives. But here's what I'm going to tell you. In any school, in any classroom, in any organization, there is an amount of time that you have to be able to share information with people. It's important that you talk to the people who it's going to impact first, the assistant principals, right? And then the folks who it's going to impact next. And that's exactly what we did. And folks, this is not tomorrow. This is September. This is as close as you can get in a school district, because of the way that we function, to being out in front. And that, we were really, really, and I appreciate what you said about, you know, the, the timing. Again, why not the last week of school? Why not two weeks? Why not the beginning of June? Because it's about the kids. And I know that this conversation is about us, and we had to have it, but we had to have it now, when the kids are done. So I'm not expecting to change your mind and for you to like the decision. I just hope that you can understand that the steps that we took were not haphazard. They were intentional. And they were intentional to try and put a separation between our children, who do deserve every bit of a normal situation. Which, by the way, shifting teachers or principals or assistant principals or all that, that's, that's not stuff the kids should have to worry about. That's for us. So, when the children arrive at their elementary schools on the first day of school, they are going to be greeted by two loving administrators and a school full of loving teachers, teachers' aides, security guards, and everybody else. Again, I'm not saying that this isn't shocking to the system. And you know I love, you know I love to say yes, you know I, I, I love to make you happy. This is about making sure that the district is moving, continuously moving in the right direction to support all of our children. Again, if, if, if we find that we make a decision, and we make a mistake in the decision, and I say we, me, I'm gonna own it. But what I don't want, I don't want you to leave this evening ever thinking for a minute, is that your sentiments, your experiences, your perspective, and your feelings don't matter, because they do. They truly do. So thank you for, for sharing and emailing and calling, and I really do appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, Superintendent's report. Well, you know, I, I just want to echo and, and thank everybody for a tremendous job. And I'm not going to go back into, you know, the pandemic. I think we're all experiencing the trauma associated with that enough. But to Trustee Brady's point, we are ramping up, and as Rose mentioned, we are ramping up and making sure that we have the, the appropriate folks in place to be able to support our kids when they come back to school in September. Now, I don't know what the New York State Department of Health Guidance is going to be yet. I think we'll get it before August thirtieth, like we did last year. But I do anticipate that there are going to be some changes, and it's going to be a lot more typical, a lot closer to typical. The big question is, will the children have to wear masks? That I'm not sure about yet. You know, there's still a back and forth on, on whether or not. The, the closest question that follows quite right behind is, can my child wear a mask? And absolutely, yes. We already have talked about that. And for anybody who feels that that's what they, they prefer, any child who feels that that's what they prefer, absolutely, that's, that's something, you know, that is, that is going to always be available. Will the barriers still be there? No. The barriers are down, and we don't anticipate the barriers will ever go back up unless, we're gonna keep them. God forbid, we need them again. Yeah. What about all of the other, you know, temperature-taking and all those things? We will, as soon as we know whether or not that, that's something that's going to have to happen, I'll make sure we, we get that out to you immediately. But we are planning for a typical year. We're planning for typical transportation. We're planning for typical athletics and the arts, and all of those amazing things to be able to get back. Question might be out there. I want my child to be on remote learning for next year. I'm not comfortable sending my child back to school yet. We don't know what the answer is on that question, then. I know that the, the New York State Board of Regents are considering that very, very carefully, considering the fact that geographically, our state is enormous and very, very different, depending upon where you are. We know that they're struggling to try and find, you know, the, the best balance. But the biggest push right now, as you're seeing, is vaccination. We also know that there are people who are uncomfortable being vaccinated, and that's fine, too. We are, of course, going to be making vaccination opportunities available anywhere we can for folks who are willing and able. People have asked me, I always say, talk to your physician, right? Ask your, ask your child's pediatrician, or talk to your physician. That's always the best advice in terms of vaccination for you and your family, coming from the school district. So, again, we'll, we'll definitely give you the update there on, on any changes to New York State guidelines. There is a lot of conversation in the public right now about Critical Race Theory, CRT. And some of you may, may have heard about this. Critical Race Theory is typically a course that's taught at the higher, highest levels of education, typically graduate school, sometimes law school, because it is very theoretical in context. Somewhere along the way, there was a conversation that, that in K-12 or pre-K-12 education, there were Critical Race Theory courses. And folks have actually called and, and asked, you know, is there Critical Race Theory in being taught in White Plains? And the answer is no. We don't teach Critical Race Theory. If you ever want to look at, I mean, it's a very complex topic. It's very, very complex. And you can imagine in a K-12 setting, it would be inappropriate, based on the child's developmental level in most cases. What we teach in the White Plains City School District is history, social studies, peace, love, care for one another, honesty, respect, core values that are part of our mission, and part of our vision, and have been part of the curriculum, which is wide open for everybody to view for all time. None of that has changed. We've always valued our diverse community. Diverse in the way we look, diverse in the way we think, diverse in where we hail from, what we, what or who we worship, all of those things. And, you know, I've been really pleased, because I think comparatively to, in, in other areas, the questions that we've received here in White Plains have been relatively minimal. areas, the questions that we've received here in White Plains have been relatively minimal, which is a good thing, I think, because most folks recognize that they have access to the curriculum, they they can talk to their teachers, they can talk to their principals. But I wanted to make sure that I got that out there, just so that, you know, if there was any lingering questions out there, or, you know, if you if you hear of somebody talking about it. I have heard a lot of news stations of all different types talking about critical race theory in America's public schools, but I have not met somebody who works in public schools that is actually teaching the CRT class. Never. And I've I've looked, and, you know, so I just want to get that message out there, because I think it is really important that children learn history. I'm a history teacher. That they learn history accurately and with the opportunity to question why, how, and when. And one of the things, if you heard any of my graduation talks this year, at Ridgeway, at Ridgeway, in fact, I I told the kids to question their teachers and question their textbooks and and ask why, and think deeper about some of the the sort of time-held, you know, thoughts that we have, because that's what makes school a place where people grow. And what's the ultimate goal? For them to be smarter than us, to beat us out, to be better at the world than we are. And, you know, I just wanted to make sure that I touched on that, because there has been so much conversation there, but that's where I'll leave it. No CRT courses. The last thing that I'd I'd like to do is recognize a very, very important person this evening. Sean Lewis is with us, and and for those of you who who may not know Sean, years ago, just a few, we started a full scale, and I have to give Ann Vaquero Teich and the Safety Team credit for this, because it started, I think, just a year that I came or the year before I came, with Alteris, where we took an assessment of our entire school district related to safety and security. And we have come, as you know, so far from where we were in terms of our safety and security operations, our protocols, our plans, and making sure that our facilities themselves are safer. Now, nothing's 100%, but when when we recognize the complexity associated with our school district, the size of our school district, I mean, at the high school alone, I think there's like 98 exits, something like that, right? Sean, close to it? You know, and we can't do that. Like, I just mentioned, I'm a history teacher, right? I'm not a security expert. So we knew that we needed a security expert, and Sean had just, I almost said graduated, but but just retired from the Yorktown Police Department, and like, the minute he retired, we hired him. So Sean has never actually been retired. He took this part-time job, and he's been with us every day ever since, and through a lot of challenging situations, as you all know. And I have to tell you, I am so grateful, Sean, not only to have worked alongside you, but also to have learned from you. I still, and Ann will will tell you, this is the truth, I still break the rule every single time. I'm supposed to stay where I am when there's an emergency. Every time I break that rule. But at least Sean was there, you know, always next to me, so that, you know, God forbid something happened, I guess he could knock me out of the way or something, Sean. But I have to tell you, you know, it's been an amazing journey with you. We've learned so much. Our district is so much safer, but not safe in a fortified way, safe in a in a in a knowledge way. Our security force had never had a department meeting. Never. When I brought them together to meet with me for the first time, so that I could talk to them about safety and security and get their ideas about what security looked like in the district, they thought they were all getting in trouble. It was the first time a superintendent ever talked to them. So you've really brought us to the next level, and tonight, we want to just thank you. Sean is officially retiring, but he's turning over his keys to an amazing guy, Jake Harrison, who some of you know, he's also a dad in the district, and he will be, he's a retired state state police officer, and he will be taking over and working closely and coordinating with Sean during the transition, along with John Leplaca. And Sean, we have a special citation for you this evening, in recognition of your outstanding dedication and commitment to the safety of the children of the White Plains City School District. More importantly, and I think more apropos, we have fur your wall, because that's basically who you were, White Plains Superman. And Sean, just on behalf of Board and and all of us here in White Plains, thank you so much.
So now you have to hang this in your your new office. Or time, normally, it's a part-time. Well, if I can, just, I'm going to be. Safety and security really belongs to everybody, and I got to say, across the district, starting at the Board, Joe, Ann, Frank, all of all of everybody, the administrators at the schools, custodians, security guards, everybody takes it very, very seriously. We couldn't accomplish all the things that we did in such a short period of time if we didn't have the support of everybody in the district, even the PTA. I mean, it really does take an entire community to just be constantly at it. And I want to thank all of you for the time. We have done a lot of things. There's a lot of things out there that you that you wouldn't even think of that that we had to to put together in those clearings. We've all spent a little bit of time together, right? Doing something, and once again, thank you very much. So wait, where are you going?
So these, you just, I just want you to be aware, whether it's in the curriculum or not, it's being discussed in these classrooms.
So you're making a great point, and I think I think it's an important point for everyone to hear, right? So as teachers, our job is to present information and then allow for discussion. It's never appropriate for me to give my opinion, unless I say, in my opinion.
Right.
Right? And even then, I have to be very cautious, because, like you say, right, kids are impressionable, and particularly if they happen to look up to to you, right? That could change the way in which they think. And so as teachers, we need to keep a very, very careful handle on that. And you're right, sometimes you can step out of lane, there's no doubt about it. But that's that's an important point that we need to continuously, as educators in the classroom, remind ourselves, and you have to do it every day. You know, I can't come into, I can't come into any meeting, whatever I think personally, I have to leave outside.
And it's not easy.
Yeah, but you're right, that's part of the job, for sure. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next, we'll move to our summary action items. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And we have our donations.
Look at me for getting.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yes, item C. We are grateful for the following donations. Five copies of the book Just Ask by Justice Sonia Sotomayor, from Selma Ortiz for the elementary schools. Teacher resource books from Elizabeth Dan for youth district-wide. $2,731.03 from the Meratic Avenue School PTA for additional seating in the MAS outdoor classroom. If you haven't seen it yet, it's really cool. It's, they're like logs that you can sit on. And two clarinets from Susan Hesney for youth district-wide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll clean off the clarinets before we share.
Yes, 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 yes.
New reads for everybody.
Yeah. Next, we'll move to our individual action items. The first one is the recommended acceptance of the resignation of Celia Strino, Director of Secondary Special Education, effective at the close of business on July 16th. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You know, I just, I just want to say, Celia wasn't here long, but we really want to thank her for what she did while she was here. She brought some wonderful eyes and expertise to the district. We'll miss her, but with every change comes opportunity, so.
And you're right, and congratulations to her in this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Moving up in the role.
Next, under individual action items, we have board discussion for our committees. I think we really don't have any.
Not since the last meeting.
Right, right, not since the last meeting. And before I ask for a motion for exec session, John, thank you again for what you do, providing for our our community to see our meetings. We appreciate you and all you do and your team. And lastly, thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you for your comments. You know, remember, the administration is here, should you need to further talk or, you know, any suggestions or ideas you may have. May I have a motion to go into exec session?
No action.
So moved.
No action will be taken.
No action will be taken, right. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone attending.
On a rainy night, thanks, everybody.
Be safe.